We're good to go.
Okay. Let's go ahead and get started. This is the Mount Lebanon Planning Board Meeting, Tuesday, July 18th. Happening in person. For those that can't be here, there is Zoom available and it will be recorded as well. Let's start with a call to order. We'll do a roll call for the board members. Rebecca Griffin.
Here.
Dave Horniac.
Here.
Sorry, Horniac. Clint Rounceville, here. John Trot.
Here.
Andrew George. Not here. Municipal staff, Josh Scanlon. Did I got your name right?
Yes.
Okay. Ian.
I'm here, and I think Dan Dizroth is on Zoom as well, so Dan is joining us too.
Ah, okay.
I am here, Ian.
Well done, Dan. Greg Wharton. Okay. I thought I saw Greg before. In the liaison, Steve Silverman. Yep, I see him. And is Marilyn here from the historical? I don't think so. Or, okay.
She usually joins on Zoom.
Yeah, can you tell? I can't see it from here. All right, let's go ahead and read this statement of public comments. The planning board will accept public comments with each agenda item. Please note that a repetition of comments made by previous speakers is not necessary for them to be considered. If a group of residents shares an opinion, we suggest that you select a spokesperson. Public comments is not the appropriate time for prolonged debate or for personal comments about questions directed to fellow residents, the board members, municipal staff, or any developer. In consideration of everyone's time, we encourage residents making public comments to refrain from repeating comments made by previous speakers. For Zoom participants, if you wish to comment during the public comment agenda items, use the raise hand function. During the public comment agenda item, the chair will recognize you. When recognized, be sure to unmute your line, announce your name and address for the record. If you have multiple or complicated comments, you are welcome to submit them to us in writing. We ask you hold your remarks to five minutes and we'll let you know when the time is up. We appreciate your efforts to be respectful and ask that the audience refrain from any behavior that is disruptive or might intimidate free speech. All right, with that, let's go ahead and get started. Do we have an approval of the meeting minutes from the last meeting, the June 20th meeting?
Rebecca Griffin, I recommend a motion. I move to approve the minutes from the June 20th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
This is Dave Horncheck, I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Let's go to old business. The following two agenda items both pertain to the Black Oak Hill project. Discussion of the agenda items can occur together with separate motions made for the subdivision plan and for the land development plan. There is a request for recommendation for final approval for a subdivision plan. De Ziega LLC is requesting to subdivide the property at 397 Old Gilkerson Road into 12 parcels. This would accommodate the Black Oak Hill land development plan submitted by De Ziega LLC to construct 10 single-family attached homes on the property. Is there a presentation?
Good evening. My name is Chris Peters. I'm with MDM, and the engineer of record for the project. With me here this evening is Matt Dearson with Midland Architects. He's going to be the architect of record for development. As we've presented to you over the last several meetings, we do have a residential subdivision and development in front of you. We believe we're substantially compliant with ordinance and engineer comments at this point. And that's with respect to both the subdivision and the land development. And we're here to address any last concerns or comments, questions you may have or that the public may offer to.
Yeah. Go ahead, Josh, if you can read the engineer's letter.
So, the comments that remain are generally permitting-related and completing agreements in nature. There are two modifications being requested. One is with regards to planting of shade trees along the right-of-way. Due to existing conditions and existing right-of-way, they need to pull the shade trees back from the right-of-way a little bit. We don't have any issues with that modification request. The other modification request is with respect to sidewalks and providing a six-foot planting strip between the curb and the sidewalk location. Due to the existing conditions, they need to pull that sidewalk in closer to the curb line to meet the existing sidewalk. We do have an outstanding comment on the ordinance as well, and that's related to the subsurface geotechnical report. And we're looking for clarification on whether or not the recommendation for grouting from the GeoTech Report is being recommended through the plans. We do know that you have a note on the plan that refers to that section, but it's not clear as to whether that is being recommended to be done or not. So, we're looking for clarification on that. Stormwater management comments have been addressed aside from any agreements that need to be executed and put in place. So, in general, the majority of the comments have been addressed, and what remains is agreement-related items.
Additional comments?
With respect to the grouting and the grading plan, it does not the intent of the developer to route that space. We do offer the notes as highlighted on the grading plan. If there are any additional needs to that note, the municipality would like to see the concern. We'd include those on a final set of plans. Or in the developer's agreement, however you'd like to address that issue. With respect to the waiver requests, as you noted, this little pipe down there that we did manage to squeeze that in, squeeze that sidewalk in here back to curb, maintaining that six-foot width in acknowledgement of the safety concerns that certainly at this point to provide some additional space for the pedestrians behind the curb. With respect to the landscape waiver request, we are interested in. So. Sorry, it's a constant battle to get the camera. We're still in frame. The trees that are on the individual lots, we understand the municipality would like to see these individuals on the same note. We'd like to incorporate that language into the agreement.
Chris, I would just like to comment. This is Dan Dizroth calling. So, related to the geotechnical and the mine grouting, we're going to need to see some sort of notes on the recorded plan. Not just on the grading plan. That's going to have to be a part of. Would like that to be, give people notice of that when they purchased the lot. We have some standard language that we use with that. So, we can work with you to get that adjusted on the recorded plan and make sure the solicitor for the municipality is okay with it.
We'd be happy to record the grading plan if that's easier or if you'd like.
No, 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 no. It's going to need to be on the recorded plan for the sale of the lots.
Understood, got you.
Okay, all right.
It still feels like it needs clarified on the drawings, though, because it's a statement, but it doesn't say whether you're doing it one way or the other. The fact that we had to ask. It seems like that needs to be incorporated into this because it's very unclear.
Very good. Make those adjustments.
I have a comment on the sidewalk. I see that you did alter it to be the six feet.
Yes.
But there's no transition other than a hard right angle between the smaller sidewalk that's existing and the new sidewalk. But your other transitions are angles to connect them. It just seems that it needs like a 45-degree angle or some type of angle so that it's not such an abrupt change.
Maybe like a taper over six feet or something.
Yeah.
Sure.
If I can ask a quick question, but clarification about tree modification.
Yes.
I want to make sure I understood the statement you had made that with respect to the developer's agreement, the tree placement. Operation and maintenance of those trees, responsibility, is that still looked upon by the municipality? Or is that to be by the property owner?
By the property owner.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, as they're out of the right-of-way, but we understand the trees are necessary and mean good planning.
Understood.
It's just, there's no room to put them out there, so we'd like those on the lot to make, we can maintain.
Okay.
In addition to that, though, there's two of them that are outside the lot line.
Which I would expect the municipality would be okay to maintain. The notes would be specific to the ones that are within the private property in terms of the private homeowners maintaining.
We should just clarify that on the landscaping plan. There was a note on the landscaping plan that said, you know, I think it said something like the street trees shall be owned and maintained by the property owners. So, I think just to clarify, even if you just label which lots or something like that are the ones that are owned and maintained by the property owners and which ones are owned and maintained by the municipality.
Shade trees on private property won't hold the same thing by the property. So, I didn't make that distinction here, but.
Yeah, we may just want to call out which ones specifically just to make sure. And then, like you said, we can memorialize it with the developer's agreement and all that too. Yeah.
Kind of spurs of other comment. When I was looking through the species of the tree that's being called out, it's the pin oak. And I know obviously one of the reasons why we're entertaining the modifications because of the steep slopes and what have you. Pin oaks at maturity are 60 to 7 feet in height with a 25-foot spread. Granted, I'll probably be long gone before it gets to that height, but they are fast growing. They grow about 24 inches every year. My concern is that size of a tree on that slope. Is there a concern? It's more of a courtesy question I have, but we do have two that are going to be owned by the municipality. And I want to make sure that that's on the list of the municipality's species and if it is a proper selection for the gradients that we're looking at there. Something to think about, that's what I'm kind of feeling out there. It's a pretty hefty tree.
I saw something that was durable, fast-growing and that I believe is on the municipality's list. Because I mean, that's important.
Sure.
For the aesthetic.
Let's see if there's maybe a better approach to the species selection. Because granted, yes, it is, that slope is a little steep. I just want to make sure those roots are as clear as possible.
That's good.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, we did just pull up the municipality's tree list, and pin oak is on the list of permitted trees within the municipality. And we do have some existing pin oaks that are street trees, so.
So, the selection, I guess it comes down to the application, is it the best fit? Thank you.
Just a quick clarification for this discussion. I think item B should be included as well, so in this discussion. So, request for recommendation for final approval for land development plan. Ziega LLC has submitted the Black Oak Plan to construct 10 single-family attached homes on the appropriate, approximately 2.7 acres located at 397 Old Gilkerson Road in the R3 zoning district. Single-family attached dwellings are used by right in the R3 zoning district. So, this conversation encompasses both of these items. Any final comments on your side?
Unless there are any other comments or questions you'd like me to address.
Ian, at this time, will we have a comment on these items?
Yeah.
And then, yeah.
Okay. The one other thing I will note, I know Matt Dearson from Midland Architecture is also here from the developer, and I believe he put some samples in the back of the room of siding.
Yeah, at this time, will we just work off the list then?
Yes.
Okay. Jacob, you're first on the list to come up and speak.
Horncheck and I with that eight-four-two, longest in the drive. The main issue I have as of right now is Old Gilkerson Road isn't actually connected to Mount Lebanon's path of sidewalks. The road directly connects to Gilkerson, and then the closest kind of sidewalk that I would see is closer to the road that connects Gilkerson on Cedar. Cedar Boulevard. Seeing as Mount Lebanon is a walking district, there currently is not any way for family homes to access the walking district for school systems. The only recommendation, excuse me, the only recommendation I would have is at the roundabout, there is at the end of Old Gilkerson Road. There is just a slight incline down to Cedars around that sort of intersection. Putting a staircase of some kind would allow for, you know, families to get to Markham Elementary, I believe is where the school district would send those students. That's about all I had. It is a walkability concern, and since they are family homes, it would make sense to have them be walkable. That's both a concern for the developers and the community at large. I don't know how Old Gilkerson hasn't been connected at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next person, Sally Lamont.
Yeah, my name is Sally Lamont. On the drive, my sister just bought a home on Old Gilkerson Park because of the nature of the street. I looked at the latest minutes that were available, and there was nothing about this cut-through street coming up from this townhouse development directing all left-turning traffic onto Old Gilkerson, which is going to be a nightmare. They're directing the traffic to Dead Man's Curve. It's a worse left turn than if you allowed a left turn directly onto Gilkerson at the end of this. There was no mention whatsoever in the minutes about this cut-through street and how it was going to affect the residents who live now on Old Gilkerson or the condominiums, which all, there's a stop signs, there's, I have some pictures. There's two things coming together, the condo exit and the Old Gilkerson exit. This is a picture of Dead Man's Curve. You cannot see the traffic coming from the left. It's difficult with the traffic line. And I would be directing 10 homes, or two or more cars, up onto a very quiet street. These are the Dead Man's Curve. On that side of town, Old Gilkerson. And to turn left onto a very dangerous left turn, and it's going to be a nightmare for the residents of Old Gilkerson, not the townhouse who's really on Gilkerson. And I wondered if you had an opportunity to read our concerns that we presented to you before this meeting and how you feel that creating this cut-through, which no one here knew about, and was not in the only minutes that are published on the internet. There's no other minutes published on the internet about this. None of the residents we spoke to knew anything about this cut-through street. In fact, one neighbor, who I hope is on the Zoom call, specifically said at one of these meetings, it was stated unequivocally there would be no additional car traffic on Old Gilkerson. Now, you're talking about mailboxes up there where they have to drive up to get their mail. You're talking about a lot more traffic. And the residents who are affected at the one end of Gilkerson, they never even got a notice about this plan at all, nor did any of the condo residents, who all come together right there where you're directing all this new traffic. And I just wonder how you feel this cut-through complies with the Mount Lebanon Municipal Code that states local streets shall be laid out so as to discourage through traffic. Why don't you just make it a no-left turn at the end of their driveway and let them go around like the rest of us do? Because the cars come down around that blind turn at about 45 to 50 miles an hour, and you're directing all this traffic to a worse intersection. Why are you doing this cut-through street up to Old Gilkerson? Did any of you want to comment about that to us? Or what the logic is there and why there was no transparency to the residents out of the facts? Which is everybody on Old Gilkerson and all those condominiums.
I would say we could have the, if the developer wants to speak about sort of their, you know, philosophy and laying out the site itself, I can speak to municipal processes that our ordinance says that we have to send notification to property owners within 200 feet for conditional use requests. So, there's no conditional use with this. Our standard practice generally goes above and beyond what says in our ordinance, which is we mail notification letters to residents within 500 feet of the development. And so, that has been our standard practice for notification. You know, also, the agendas are posted on the website as far as the meeting minutes question. The planning board has always posted the meeting minutes after the board approves them. So, you heard tonight, the first motion in the meeting, they approved the minutes from the prior meeting. So, then those minutes will go up on the website now that they've been approved by the board. That said, since we've done the Zoom webinar stuff since COVID, really, those meeting videos go up on the website, usually within the same week that the meeting happens, usually by Friday. So, those meeting videos are available on the municipal website from the prior meetings.
I couldn't find them. You had one thing, it was the April minutes. And I believe the meeting that the neighbor who said it was stated that there would be no additional car traffic must have been the May meeting. They're not up there, and I don't know what, there's no videos posted. One thing, it says the April 18th minutes. Want your five minutes to talk?
Well, are you going to just start a question?
We could let the developer talk about the site layout.
So, Ian was answering the procedural question. Just to let you know, we did see your request. We did review it, we did discuss it prior. We'll let the developer respond to it. And then, Ian, I don't know if Gateway has any response that we may want to add because I know there was discussion, you know, before the meeting about this. But I think we'll let, should we let the developer respond first?
Yeah, we can do that. And I did forward your letter to our municipal engineers to review as well, and to the planning board.
So, Chuck, we'll give you a chance to come back up if you need to.
I do respect your concern. I understand. First and foremost, this is a use-by-right in the district. We are permitted to put these homes there. In terms of your concerns about traffic and the potential for cut-through, valid. I would offer that this is functionally a private driveway. This isn't a public road. So, if you or I were to live here and you were concerned about the residents that live here using this, that would functionally be the right of the street. If folks other than these residents are using this to come around and through, I would turn to the municipality in conjunction with SIDA to address that as a nuisance. The development itself, we did vet this with both municipal traffic engineers as well as PENDO. The net increase in traffic in a day is an additional 62 trips. So, it's an additional 62 trips. And now, I'm using the data that our traffic engineer prepared. We've had these discussions with Mr. Haberman at Gateway, as well as with the folks at the permitting department at PENDO. They all expressed concerns about the potential for cut-through. So, we have addressed, we have provided some additional signage here and additional geometry of the layout to make it inconvenient for folks to come in and out of this in a casual fashion.
To make that safer transition over to the shop. We do not generate enough traffic to warrant.
On Gilkerson Road.
We do not generate enough traffic.
Coming up with a development onto a plate in 40 yards of a major intersection. It's all being addressed in our permitting with.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You'll need, you'll get an opportunity to come up and talk. This is just your comments right now.
As I was saying, we've addressed all of that with both municipal traffic engineers. Excuse me. Excuse me.
Chuck, you'll get a chance to come up and talk.
We have addressed all of this in our conversations with the municipal engineer and with PENDO. This is a use-by-right. We don't generate enough traffic for us to do additional traffic studies or take an additional look at this beyond what we've already done. With respect to the layout, sir, I would offer that existing home, two homes, have functionally a governor's drive through the property as well as egress onto Old Gilkerson Road.
Can I clarify? With a reason, and you tell me if I'm wrong. The two inlet westbound from Gilkerson and the outlet westbound from the development on the Gilkerson, that was a major ask for us to get. To try and alleviate traffic on Old Gilkerson on your behalf. The alternative is we don't get those, and every car trip that comes to the development goes along Old Gilkerson both ways.
That's right. That's really the way that you're handling.
I wouldn't.
Hold on, hold on. Hey, hey, you're going to have to come up and talk.
Chuck, you're not up here anymore. Okay, I'm done. Yeah, no, we're a use-by-right. We've complied with municipal ordinance with respect to traffic. We're working through PENDO for permitting right now, and I'm done making comments. Thank you.
Before we go to Chuck, does Gateway want to say anything? Or does anyone up here want to say anything? I know we had discussion about it, or would you like me just to move on to the next citizen?
If Gateway wants to add the traffic engineers' comments, we could add those in as well.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, good.
So, the site generates approximately 60 trips per day. That's 30 in, 30 out. Approximately half those trips are anticipated to access from the existing Old Gilkerson and Gilkerson Road intersection, and the other half would be from the right in and right out of the development itself. The amount of traffic that this development itself generates is insignificant, and it's de minimis in nature. Now, that's not saying that there's not a lot of volume on Gilkerson Road. That's saying that the development itself doesn't generate a ton of trips. The traffic for this area would not be considered a cut-through for this project, this property, and the owners and future owners of this have just as much right to access Old Gilkerson or Gilkerson Road as anybody else that lives along that street as it sits today. It's anticipated that the access points in front of the development are going to be accessed mainly by the townhomes themselves and not used as a cut-through because there's not essentially another street to cut through to get up through that area. As it relates to any existing issues at the intersection of Gilkerson Road and Old Gilkerson Road, if there are existing safety concerns or operational concerns related to that intersection. um, if there are existing safety, uh, concerns or operational concerns related to that intersection, the residents can submit a, a request to the traffic board for review, um, of that intersection. Um, adding thirty trips per day to that intersection will not change the operational characteristics of that intersection. Um, nor will a slight volume increase correlate to, um, increased safety issues in, in that area. If that existing intersection.
Thank you for that additional information. Uh, one other note that came up through Gateways and our, uh, you know, review of the plans. Um, there is, uh, two existing curb cuts right now on Gilkison Road. Um, and there is one existing curb cut on Old Gilkison Road with a driveway that comes into the property. Um, the development proposal from our read of the plans makes the curb cut a little bit wider onto Old Gilkison Road, but they're essentially using the same existing curb cut. Um, that's, that's egressing onto Old Gilkison right now, um, as well as maintaining two access points off of Gilkison Road. Granted, they're changing the locations, but, um, you know, they're, they're keeping the same number of ingress and egress points, uh, as currently exist on the property.
Ian and Josh, thank you for that additional information. We'll go back to the citizen comments now. Um, Chuck, you have an opportunity to come back up if you would like.
Could you please state your name and address?
I just, I just want to understand the logic of why you don't make it just no left turn from the exit. Does that, can anybody tell me the logic of it? Why? Or why not?
I don't understand this.
You can only come inbound and you can only go out. For the right.
For the right.
Absolutely. PENDOT made us throw it down in fact. Because anyone who wants to go this way on Gilkison has to be able to reach Gilkison or Old Gilkison.
Up Cedar.
You're saying everyone who lives there has to go up Cedar to reach the gallery?
Listen, I, uh, my sister is going to live on Gilkison. Do you want to know the answer to that?
I don't.
My sister's going to live on that street. So we've been over there many, many times recently. And the fastest way to get to nineteen is to go up Cedar, not to go back. Gilkison, do you think that right? At nineteen off Gilkison, you're gonna wait there five minutes?
All I can say to you, sir, is that these are being built by right, not asking for any accommodation or variance. And the. These people are entitled to live and to access the roads that they run on in the same way that your sister is. That's all I'm saying.
All I'm saying is.
The density is appropriate because the density is per the zoning code.
All I'm saying is.
Hold on, wait, 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 wait. One, one person at a time. We're, as, as we, as we stated at the outset of the meeting, as we remember our statement on public comments. Public comments is not the appropriate time for prolonged debate or personal comments or questions directed to fellow residents, board members, staff, or the developer.
So then, uh, since it's going to be all plugged up, are we going to be able to go down this new road you're constructing so we can turn right?
It's a private driveway. It's going to appear for all intents and purposes to be an extension of the individual private driveways of the house. It's maintained by covenant by the owners, so it is in fact a private driveway.
So we won't be able to go down there to turn right. We'll be sitting out there where everybody's trying to turn left when we want to go right because we know that's dead man's curb. Well, we can't go down that and turn right. Is that what you're saying? It's not going to be our street.
Private property.
That, that actually would be liberal definition of country.
Okay. And then, yeah, which it is. So their mailboxes are going to be up on Old Gilkison too. So I don't know how you're getting thirty.
Almost likely on Gilkison.
Okay. Well, that wasn't the plan we were showed. And where is?
Their addresses are on Old Gilkison.
Where is the cut through coming out on Old Gilkison in front of whose house?
Uh, yeah. If that's a question, I, I please ask you to stop referring to this as a cut through. Those are private driveways. There's no, there is no cut through there. It's not a public. Ask Ian just saying that it's at the location of the existing curb cut. It's just, it's being widened.
Uh, whose house is out in front of it? I don't know.
Uh, one person at a time, so.
Okay. I, I still don't understand.
Wh- where is it in relation to three A?
I do not have addresses on there, so.
I have.
Where's the circle?
This is the circle. This is three ninety-eight. If that's all of you, three ninety-eight. That is that house. That is the very last house before the circle. There's no house here. The driveway for that house is directly across from here. So more or less their driveway curb cut is in direct alignment with the edge of this. So this curb cut is entirely beyond the last driveway curb cut of the last.
Okay. So it's going to be right in front of John's house, I guess.
All right. Thank you for the clarification as we're going through this. It's a little bit abnormal. Uh, this is not how this process is supposed to work, but we're trying to get your questions answered. With that being said, let's go to the next person, uh, Tyler Love, please.
Thank you, everybody. Um, Tyler Love, three sixty-one Old Gilkison. Um, first I've seen it, so that's why I'm just looking at it for a sec up here. Um, this is our house right here on the corner. Um, I had called several times. I don't know if this is anything that really matters for you guys, but I had called the municipal planning multiple times over the last several years regarding this project. I was told every single time you'll get a notice mailed to you because I'm literally, what's the offset in Mount Lebanon? Ten feet? What's, what's the setbacks? Are you right?
Five. Minimum was five.
You're, so you're five foot from my property line.
Yes, sir.
On this side. Yeah. So I was told I was going to get something. I never got anything. So this is my first meeting. So sorry if I'm a little upset. Um, but we were told that we would be informed of everything. Um, and like you said, I'm not going to repeat any of the traffic stuff, but we also do have the nursing home there that requires ambulance traffic. Couple times, I don't know, a day, but we do see them. People come out of the nursing home and do not even know that a right exists and they come flying out. Don't look right. I've almost been T-boned ten times in the last six months. These people.
Point out where you're talking.
Uh, down where they, so continuation of the road, I'm saying, out of the, there's a, uh, it's a rehab facility now. And cars will come down the hill and just gun it right, not even look. And I know that's a private property issue as well as the egress, egress here. But it's an issue. Uh, we also have, you can come, I'll sit on my front porch, watch eight cars a day. And I don't know if that was included in the traffic study. Fly down the very tight curve right here at the top of my driveway, blind to the top of this little hill. Now, I don't know what you guys are going to pull out of this area to make it any better, but cars will fly, go around the circle and realize that it is not a pass through because they already think it is. So when they see this down here, they're going to go right down and right through. And I know that that's a private driveway and I understand all the reasoning with that. However, it happens every single day. We'll have a car go by forty-five miles an hour on our street and then five seconds later rip it right back down because they thought they were taking a shortcut. And I don't know if, again, I don't know if that's included in the traffic study or what. But it is a tight, narrow street right there, right in front of our driveway. I have a five-year-old. We can't walk to school now because the staircase down behind the condos been in disrepair for five years. So the only way for us to get him to mark them is walk down through this development, down a gravelled hill onto Cedar and walk all the way up and around instead of going down and up the hill straight to school. So I don't know if that, again, that's kind of off topic, but it's all relative to what we're going to have to do as residents of our street because of this. And I guess between a fence along our side. What kind of screen?
Uh, sight tight line.
Yeah, we don't. Well, I'm not allowed to put a solid screen on my yard, so.
We're going to put up exactly the same fence you can.
We said it's a solid screen, right?
It's a sight tight, it's a white line.
Yeah, I'm not allowed to put that on my property. I, yeah, no. Yeah, that's the thing. It's a shadow box only, no solid panels. Okay. And how tall is it?
Four feet.
Okay. That's, that's good. Um, but yes, I mean, if it's solid, that's going to have to change obviously too.
It's sight tight.
It's a shadow box. Okay. Yeah, okay. So, I mean, that's all I really have. Sorry, guys. I repeated because it's my first meeting.
Well.
And we never knew about it.
I am, I mean, we are sensitive. We all live in Mount Lebanon.
Yeah.
So we hear what you're saying. Um, has, I'm not sure, Ian, what kind of options, I mean, I'd like to get the traffic board involved in this conversation, the police involved in this conversation, just to see if there's some traffic calming elements that we can look at for the roadway. Um, they've been implemented on other places, uh, within Mount Lebanon, whether it's the, uh, um, you know, the raised tables or, or what have you to try to discourage forty-five mile per hour drag strips.
Literally.
That's what I'm saying.
Sounds like there's an existing concern long before this.
There is. Then that's what I'm saying. And, and.
We hear you and we appreciate your safety concerns and traffic concerns.
So I'm trying to separate the development from this concern because your concern is going to happen no matter what happens with.
Oh, and I, I get it. I'm, we're dead in the water right now.
So we're looking, we're trying to look for options to help you, and that's why I'm trying to.
No, I agree. And we aren't sidewalks, like they said, on, on our street at all.
Yeah.
So it's dangerous walking to and from school. Yeah, we can't walk our kid.
But I think it should be clarified that the development and this traffic board are two separate things.
Correct. But I mean, it's a reflection of the development as well, adding that meant more cars, even if it's what thirty a day, we said fifteen from each. That's still a lot of cars in a tiny street that has eight houses.
Understood.
Tyler, thank you for your comments. We appreciate the safety and traffic concerns. The follow-up on, uh, Mr. Hornacek's point, um, the traffic board is the, um, body in Mount Lebanon that, uh, sort of reviews all resident requests for um, any kind of traffic studies, traffic calming, anything like that. So, um, you know, there's a, a process um, through, uh, the traffic control division in the police department, um, is the staff liaisons to the traffic board. So um, that's the, the place to start for kind of existing traffic concerns is, as Mr. Hornacek said, going to the, the traffic board and, and making a request for them to do a study on the street.
Ian, um, could you clarify how somebody could report the, the stair disrepair?
That's been discussed at the commission and the commission's had that, uh, it's, it's been on their additional projects discussions. So the commission is aware of it. If you would like.
You sold one, four, J place also second ward commissioner. A question about the stairs that that has been on, I'm just looking at both directions, sorry. The stairs is on the list of items we're looking to fund. We just had an unassigned fund discussion Tuesday. And I'm hoping that that funding for those steps can go into a bond issue the commission puts together later this year. So it's still on the list, items to talk about, current estimate to fix it is about a hundred forty-five thousand dollars and that's literally, yeah, it's not inexpensive. And that's actually the least expensive option as opposed to steel or something like that, but it's about a hundred forty-five thousand to take the old one down, put a new one up. It's on the list, but obviously there are many, I've said it every budget cycle, and many were the items that do not get funded. So here's one, we're again looking to say, okay, yes, there's some things we covered with unassigned funds, but there are other things we look at and said, all right, well, how are we thinking about a bond issue? Can we put these stairs in the bond? Now, again, on one vote out of five, but this is what I'm pushing for to try and affect that. It'd be great for certainly commission to hear. I've heard from folks in Englewood, I've not heard from residents on Old Gilkison to say, hey, this is something we want to see. Uh, and certainly it's good for commission to hear all of us in this perspective. So anyway, that's just an update on where things are, just so you know. So anyway, thank you.
All right, Steve, thank you for that update. Let's go to the next person on the list, Lori. Okay. Okay. We'll go to the next person, Terry. Terry, if you want to talk, just come up and just come on up.
I am Terry Batiste. I'm, uh, three forty-five Old Gilkison Road. Uh, my question, it kind of has been covered, but our concern initially was all the traffic making the left or the additional traffic making the left because every morning when I go to work, if I leave a little bit late and it's after seven, it could take me five minutes to make that left. Um, so my question isn't as much them because I understand they have a right to use the street because they're on this street. Um, but it would be more for the borough and like how we can do something about that interception, intersection in the summertime and the winter when there's no foliage, it's not really an issue. Um, I mean, it's still a dangerous left because the traffic's coming forty-five miles an hour on a, on a blind turn, but when there's no foliage, you can kind of see further down. This time of year, it's like the borough does nothing down there to anybody. Um, it's like it's forgotten about and no one trims anything or prunes anything or does anything. So like, who could I talk to moving forward about that?
Ian, so, uh, step one about traffic concerns would be the traffic board. Um, that, uh, property at the corner, um, that does kind of create some of those sightline issues you referenced is the Timber Creek condo. So that is Timber Creek's property. They do own that and it's their responsibility to maintain it.
The borough responsible for the road ten feet back or something?
No. Uh, no, we have municipal street trees that we own and maintain.
Okay.
Um, but those, there's no municipal street trees in that section and Gilkison Road there is a PENDOT road as well. Um, so um, it, it, PENDOT could be, it depends on how far back the trees actually are. Um, you know, looking at it just kind of on Google Maps of, you know, looking back to when there were leaves on the trees. Um, it looks like the trees themselves are sort of outside what's probably the PENDOT right of way. Um, so I would, I would, looking at the map, say that's, you know, Timber Creek's responsibility to maintain those trees, but um, you know, you could reach out to PENDOT as well since that is a state road. So for any Old Gilkison Road concerns, um, that would be the Mount Lebanon Traffic Board. Um, Gilkison Road, uh, concerns would be PENDOT or potentially Timber Creek with, uh, you know, maintaining the trees on their property.
Okay. All right. So there's a PENDOT or there's a, uh, Mount Lebanon Traffic Meeting?
There is. Uh, I will find you in the next traffic board meeting. Thank you. There we go.
At the end of the road there, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I throw something out there just for the, for the good of the order? I would assume that any traffic is coming fast on Old Gilkison, so if there could prove some of it, it's not about the road. So for my money, that would be the apartments for the rehab.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a no outlet sign back at the apartments. There is no no outlet sign.
It's probably overgrown.
I can see. Cause like, I think you just need to do that in the sense, but I'm seeing this coming out of the rehab.
While Ian looks for that date, uh, thank you, Terry, for coming up and talking. Helps putting his, puts these points on record so we can work towards a solution, uh, so it'll be, you know, more safety in the community and try to alleviate some of these traffic concerns.
Can I just add one thing to help Terry out? Josh, do we have a, a PENDOT contact? That we might be able to share or?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think of, just so we can cut through some red tape so they can, the, the neighbors can voice their opinion directly to PENDOT, the right person.
Yeah. Coordinate that.
We're going to try to, we're, we're going to get you, the person to speak to at PENDOT, just so no runarounds.
Along with the contact to address, uh, with Mount Lebanon as well. Uh, give you a little break on this body.
Yeah, it's, it's okay. Uh, thanks. So the traffic board meeting is September sixth, or Wednesday, September sixth, seven PM in this room. Um, and then the staff contact is Lieutenant Scott Green at the police department. Um, his contact info is on the website under the traffic board section.
Okay, thank you, Ian.
Submit anything. All right, good. They have to submit anything in advance to be on the agenda or is it just a public comments as well?
So our commission liaison is here. I'll let him speak to the traffic board procedures.
Um, couple things. One is to questions officially send me an email request. All I'll do is I'll forward that to Lieutenant Green to say this is something to get on the traffic board agenda. Make sure you show up for the meeting because they'll say anybody here to speak on behalf of the subject matter to the question about cutting, cutting vegetation. To the question about cutting, cutting vegetation, I know there was an issue on Connor Road some years ago where the board looked and said, hey, there's some vegetation sticking out. Of course, the question whose property it was, but in the end, there's at least some complaint filed to say, go cut some trees down, or whatever they did. So again, process procedure, next meeting is September, you have a date?
Sixth.
September sixth. Um, you know, and if you can, send me that email, then I'll forward that along, so y'all can get on the agenda. Also, given the gateway is there, if you could let, uh, the traffic engineer know this, this one's coming. That way they can do the research ahead of time.
Yep, understood.
Yeah, cool, great, thank you.
All right, thanks for that additional information, Steve. Um, let's go to the next person, I believe it's Quinlan. Okay. Okay. All right. All right, that'll wrap up the, uh, citizens' comments for that part. Are you Diane? Oh, okay, sorry, uh, come on up, Diane.
I just wanted to add a few things. I'm Diane Aiken Spiero, I live at tree twenty-nine Old Gilkerson Road. I'm directly across from the convalescent home. I am born, raised, and lived on that street my entire life. I know changes are happening, I have no problem with the developments that are being done. My concern is like everybody else is that's been here, is with the traffic and the way we have to get on and off of Old Gilkerson Road. The problem just isn't turning left, I can't even see to turn right. The, the, it's so blocked to try to see cars coming down that hill. And as soon as they start at the top of Gilkerson Road and they're flying down that hill, many times, half of my car is out in the road, I'm ready to make my right-hand turn, and I've got to try to back up if there's not a car behind me to get off the road so that they just fly by, and then I can make a right turn, let alone a left, which I rarely do. I always go right, go all the way around if I need to go up to the Galleria, which when I lived here, it was Kaufman's, and then it became the Galleria. So that's a long time ago. Also, when I lived here, Old Gilkerson Road was the main road. And they took our property when there was so much traffic, and they made Gilkerson Road. And they made it the four-lane highway, they made, put the turnaround, and we became Old Gilkerson Road. And I have probably the only driveway that you can take off of Gilkerson Road. So I do have a exit off of the main road, and I park along the back. Now, I have my grandchildren at my house a lot, and walking them, once I get past the nursing home, it has been no problem because there's, wasn't that much traffic. My concern is now with the development, and if they're gonna have more cars coming up, there's no sidewalks, there's no walkway, you could only walk on the road itself, Old Gilkerson. And I don't believe that's even a township road. If I'm not mistaken, it's county or state that's supposed to maintain that road. Yes.
Yeah.
It's a municipal street. It was turned back from the county to Mount Lebanon.
Oh, who's?
That was Dan Daisroth, our municipal engineer on those, and Stan Daisroth.
So it is a township road now again?
Yes, we maintain the street.
Okay. But, uh, just if going forward with this development, if you could take some of those considerations in, especially, uh, maybe it's the traffic board I need to come to too with some of those concerns.
I'm sure Steve would appreciate that.
And I do. But I do know they did, what was a nice thing is when they made that left-hand turn on the main road so that at least we have slight turn to turn into Old Gilkerson Road that we never had before. So that has helped us, and when trying to turn into our street, it's getting out of it that we have a major problem. That's all I have to say on that.
Well, thank you for your comments, Diane. I know there's some existing challenges with safety and traffic there. Uh, your comments will hopefully help, you know, work towards a solution. Steve, anything additional? No, okay. Any, any final comments from developer? No?
I guess, the only thing I would say is.
Just come on up if you want to.
I just wanted, and I think I did address it, the question of the acreage, because it's a subdivision of the existing lot, the acreage includes land on the other side of Gilkerson Road that was part of the original parcel that was cut through when the right-of-way was put through on Gilkerson. I think they, the developer tried to give it to the, the conservancy, they don't want it, they're, they, they, it's, it's kind of a rent. Part of it's an upper-same player.
We have a thing.
Part of it, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so every single B simple lot that we're creating conforms to the zoning code. It's just the overall size of the lot is that misleading number.
All right, thank you for that additional clarification. Ian or Josh, any additional comments on your side?
No additional comments.
Uh, yeah, thank you, good reminder. Um, Ian, are there any questions on Zoom?
Um, so if anybody on Zoom has a comment, please raise your hand. Two on Zoom with their hands raised, so, uh, Mary Ann, if you would like to state your name, address, and make your comment. You may need to unmute yourself, there we go. Mary Ann, if you're trying to talk, we can't hear you. Uh. Okay. Why don't we move on to the next one, and we'll see if she.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, uh, there is a problem, I think, because I raised my hand and like, I, I cannot unmute myself. This is up to you, I think, to unmute our, our microphones. I'm not sure the previous person tried to talk, maybe she was not able to.
Okay, yeah, so go ahead, say your name and address and make your comments, please.
Okay, great, so, um, I'm Irene Dersko, I'm currently living three five one Old Gilkerson Road. Um, I'm here to join, um, the concerns my neighbors have, and actually to give a slightly different perspective. I'm a mother of a five, five months old baby. And actually, I could not come here in person today, because if you walk with a stroller, you're blocked on Old Gilkerson Road. You just have to stay there. Um, so there's, i- it's impossible to cross Gilkerson Road, there is no pedestrian crossing, although there are two bus stop on each side, which is absolutely not logical. But I know you, you mentioned that we have to, um, probably consult PennDOT about that. Uh, but it's, it's important. Another thing is that, uh, the person, my neighbors who talked today, they raised a concern about the walkability, and indeed, uh, I can't, with, with a stroller, I cannot access all those nice things we have in Mount Lebanon, like tennis court, um, you know, um, I don't know, boulangerie, whatever is there, it's just impossible. So you're blocked on this road if you're with a stroller. But I think we have to encourage walking, walking with kids, and enjoying all the facilities we have in Mount Lebanon. Uh, so stairs is a nice thing, um, at the end of Old Gilkerson Road, but I think that, um, something for strollers would be even better, just to be able to access, uh, feeder mover. So I think it's a very important issue. And another thing, uh, once more during one, um, the neighbor's Diane, I think, uh, who was talking about this, uh, once you go with a stroller, it is not that peaceful already, because there are a lot of cars. So more cars will mean like, i- it, it will be kind of dangerous, not safe to walk there with a stroller. And I'm not even talking about like, two or three kids, um, and you're walking with them, toddlers or whatever. So I think these are, uh, major concerns about, about this, this road, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Marlene again?
Mary Ann, I think, sure, we can try Mary Ann one more time.
Uh, you're trying me one more time, sorry. It, it's once more me, I think, e- each time I receive the, the note about unmuting myself, sorry.
I think. Mary Ann, if you're able to make a comment, um, I think you're unmuted now. So Mary Ann, if you have a comment, um, that you're not able to give here, you can, uh, send me an email. It's IMCMeans@mountlebanan.org, so I M C M E A N S at mountlebanan.org. Um, and if we get that comment, we can add it to the list of, of comments. As we will also make note that we did receive the, the one letter from the residents as well in advance of the meeting.
All right, thank you, Ian. Uh, is there a motion by the board?
I make a motion to recommend final approval to the subdivision plan of three ninety-seven Old Gilkerson Road, conditioned upon the developer addressing items noted in the engineer's review letter of July tenth, two thousand twenty-three, and any other comments from the planning board.
Uh, Rebecca Griffiths, I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries. Uh, let's move to the second item now. Item B. There.
Dave Horncheck. I make a motion to recommend final approval to the Black Oak Hill Land Development Plan at three ninety-seven Old Gilkerson Road, conditioned upon the developers addressing items noted in the engineer's review letter dated July tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The developer receiving necessary approvals from all outside agencies, and any other comments from the planning board, uh, specifically the items that we had discussed, uh, this evening.
Is there a second?
John Schrodau, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. That'll wrap up old business. Uh, let's move forward with new business now. There's a request for preliminary approval for a subdivision plan. Nancy Galette and, uh, Chabad Labaditch of South Hills are proposing a subdivision where seventeen oh one McFarland Road will be receiving an appropriate approximate, sorry, four thousand square foot section from seventeen twenty-six Theodan Drive and consolidating into a single point seven three acre lot. Both commercial and residential lots will remain in compliance with the zoning regulations after the recording of the plan. Is there anyone to speak on that item? Okay, come on up and introduce yourself.
My name is Quentin Kittel, I reside at three forty-six Parkside, uh, I am with QK Architecture. I'm the architect of records for Shabat. I think it's a cut and dry submission, we're just giving a subdivision to the property, actually lot consolidation to the joint property, for the use of the Shabat.
Okay. Um, we do the engineer's letter?
Yeah, we'll do the engineer's letter, and then I have an additional comment after that, so yeah, okay.
So we have a letter dated July twelfth, twenty twenty-three. The handful of comments that we do have are minor in nature, um, essentially some plan cleanup, showing setbacks on the property. Um, we do have a comment about showing zoning district boundary lines, which Ian's gonna discuss a little bit further. Evidence of ownership, et cetera. So, um, our comments are minor, and it's nothing we feel that can't be addressed.
Go ahead, Ian. So, um, on this plan, the, uh, property at seventeen twenty-six Theodan is in the R-two zoning district. The, um, Habbad is in the, uh, C-two zoning district. So, um, this lot consolidation plan, as it is drawn up, would create split lot zoning. Um, and the way our ordinance reads is that if you have split lot zoning, uh, you have to abide by the more restrictive zoning districts conditions. Um, so just as an FYI, um, you know, you might want to advise your clients, they may want to consider submitting a rezoning request for that approximately four thousand square foot section so that it's all zoned C-two commercial, just like the rest of their property. Because then, if they leave it as proposed, the rest of their property would also have to, uh, have potential future restrictions based on the R-two zoning district because of the split lot zoning. Um, so our recommendation, uh, would be that they probably want to submit that. It would probably be a good idea for them to do the zoning request. Um, obviously, it's their choice. Um, I spoke with the solicitor on it, he said that, you know, the commission can, or the planning board can recommend, the commission can approve the subdivision as proposed, but then if the Habbad comes in and wants to, uh, you know, do anything, they're gonna have to comply with the R-two zoning regulations because it would have the split lot zoning. So if they want to submit that, um, you know, we can review it, but just as an FYI, that since we don't have that piece, uh, this plan would create that split lot zoning.
And I appreciate that, you know, you've been given that advice, and we'll certainly take that into consideration for their, their advisement. To my knowledge, uh, in the discussion, there are no concrete plans or anything up there, certainly no development.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it, it can linger for the time being. I think the option of then having it there is just really what they're after for the time being. So, um, we'll, we'll bring that up to them and put it, I, I don't disagree, I think we should go to the C three.
Yeah, it would. It would make it cleaner in the long run too, because then if in the future they went to sell the property, and it would, you know, be messy then or something like that, or even if they wanted to do.
Form on the bike chain, I was filling out right now.
There's, there's an application fee and everything else, so. But, uh, they're, they're all on the website, um, but we can, we can get you the, the form for that as well.
But Ian, so if they combine the lot, it would, the entire lot though, would be subject to the R-two, right? Not just the little parcel.
That's correct, yes. Yeah, because the lot would be, have split zoning on it, and, uh, the way our ordinance reads, the more restrictive district takes precedence, so, yeah.
Good effort, aye.
Yes.
All right, um, any additional comments? Okay, any additional comments from the board? Uh, is there a motion?
Is that conditional, like the corrections are conditional to the approval? Or do you want us to resubmit it? And then have it, uh, resubmitted?
So, I mean, the, the planning board can make a motion, my recommendation to the board is to grant preliminary approval tonight. Um, and then, you know, you could make the corrections, submit again. If you want to do the zoning amendment too, you could submit that at the same time. The planning board would have another meeting, then recommend final approval, and then we go on to the commission for the actual final approval, so. Yeah, that's, that's kind of our standard of three meetings of preliminary approval, recommend final, and then commission final. Mm-hmm, yep, they can submit, you know, they can make the revisions, submit for the next meeting, and also submit the rezoning requests, and then it's all happening concurrently.
Do you like your question answered? Okay. Um, any additional comments from the board?
Nothing from me.
Oh, anybody on Zoom, left, just standing?
Just me.
Okay. All right, we'll assume you don't have a question, uh, we don't see your hand raised. Um, and is there a motion by the board?
Rebecca Griffiths, I'll make a motion to grant preliminary approval to the sub, subdivision plan at seventeen oh one McFarland Road, conditioned upon the developer addressing items required to be completed prior, fired to final, final approval noted in the engineer's review letter dated July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. And there were no additional comments from the board.
Is there a second?
Dave Horncheck, aye, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, things approved. Let's move on to the comprehensive plan update. Ian, I think you have an update for us?
Yes, uh, so our consultants had another round of focus group meetings, uh, over the. Yes, uh, so our consultants had another round of focus group meetings, uh, over the last month. Uh, we got some very good feedback on those and we are moving into the third phase of the project, which is the build phase, where they will start to actually build out the recommendations of the plan. We are still on track for, uh, adoption by the end of this year. So they will probably be coming in front of the planning board to make a presentation. I would guess probably in the October, November timeframe, um, of those recommendations, but we should start seeing some, uh, draft recommendations coming out soon. And the next public outreach will be as part of the Uptown Unveiled event, so very exciting that the Uptown Streetscape project is wrapping up. So the first Saturday of August, I believe it's August fifth, uh, from noon to six, we're having an event out here, we're going to close the street, uh, have some bands playing, have some food trucks, things like that. Let people come up, kind of have a good time on our new streetscape and we'll have a little comp plan display there to work on some visioning for the, uh, south parking garage space because we just completed a structural engineering study on that garage, which says that probably within the next five to seven years, we're going to have to rebuild it. So we figure since we're doing the comprehensive plan, it's a good time to potentially vision what that space could be. Um, the, you know, obviously there's the, you know, parking that kind of matches the topography from Washington Road down to Florida, but, um, you know, if we're going to rebuild the garage and spend money out of our Parking Enterprise Fund, is there also the opportunity for maybe a public private partnership and build the garage structurally strong enough to put something on top of it? Some kind of mixed use development or public space of some kind, um, so, you know, we want to get some public input. I figure that's a good event to come out and do that, people will be up here on the street and can kind of get a feel for what people might want to see there in the future.
Thank you. We'll move to citizen comments, the board will now accept public comments relating to any items not appearing on the agenda. Okay, we're good. Is there a motion for, or sorry, uh, announcement for the next meeting? The next meet, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Mount Lebanon Planning Board is Tuesday, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty three at seven P M. In this room and on Zoom. All municipal meetings now have a Zoom webinar component to enable, uh, residents to attend meetings either virtually or in person. With that, our meeting has concluded, we'll, uh, is there a motion for adjournment?
This is Dave Hornet Check, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
John Schrod, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it carries, we're adjourned, thank you. Getting in Dan.
Good evening, everybody, have a good evening, take care.
Thank you. Andrew missed a good one.